Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Village of Bartlett Board Meeting for December 2nd, 2014. I call this meeting to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Erns?
Yes.
Cammerer?
Here.
Carbonero?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Ranky?
Here.
Shipman?
Here.
President Wallace?
Here. I've requested Pastor Susan Tyrell to provide our invocation for this evening.
Holy God, you are the watcher and keeper of the world in this community, and we are grateful. In this season of love and light in all of its forms of this interfaith community, accepting that all of us are different, God, we gather as leaders and people to discuss and make decisions on behalf of Bartlett's best interests. Break us away for a little while from the chains of the past and of the world's ills that cause us to pause. May your guidance be known for the good of all, as your faithfulness, your truth shines through to reflect the values that would befit us as your people in this community. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Tyrell. Please stay standing for the Fudge Allegiance.
The Fudge Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Moving along to the consent agenda, all items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine or be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a board member still requests, in which event they will be removed and put place at the general order of business. At this point, is there anything that anyone would like to add to the consent agenda?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to add, under planning and zoning, number one, 706 Heather Lane, front yard variation.
Hearing none, I entertain a motion to amend the consent agenda to include the bills list and A1, the Planning and Zoning Committee, 706 Heather Lane, front yard variation, and the Barista Creek Tiff Development Note, number three payout request.
So moved.
Second.
It's moved by trustee Shipman, seconded by trustee Ranky. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Erns?
Yes.
Cammerer?
Yes.
Carbonero?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
That motion carries. I'll entertain a motion to approve the amended consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Cammerer, seconded by trustee Martin. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Erns?
Yes.
Cammerer?
Yes.
Carbonero?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda is the minutes. I'll entertain a motion to approve the Truth and Taxation Public Hearing Minutes for November 18th, 2014, along with the Board and Committee Minutes for November 18th, 2014.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Martin, seconded by trustee Cammerer. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Erns?
Yes.
Cammerer?
Yes.
Carbonero?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Shipman?
Abstain.
Motion carries. Next item we have on our agenda is the Treasurer's Report. Jeff, do you have good news to share with us in this season of joy?
Yes, I believe I do, and we'll be talking about that quite a bit this evening. We'll start out with the sales tax report for the fiscal year-to-date through September 2014. Fiscal year-to-date revenue, $943,769, and it represents a 3.3 percent decrease from the same time period last year. However, sales tax is still trending on budget. One of the things that Mayor Wallace asked me to do also was to take a look at video gambling and to see if there's any effect on sales tax, now that video gambling is well-established in the village. And from what I'm seeing with sales tax and how it's trending on our budget, I'm not seeing any effect video gambling is having on sales tax at this time. Moving on to the motor fuel tax allotment report through October of 2014, fiscal year-to-date revenue of $527,669, and it represents a 0.77 percent decrease from the same time period last year.
Thank you, Jeff.
Question for me. Can you expand on the, you've seen the video gambling has happened? Expand on that a little bit for us?
Video gambling receipts to date, I think through our fiscal year, we'll see revenue now of about $100,000. I think that's what it's going to generate now, based upon the establishments that are in the village. But we're not seeing a major decrease, or really any type of a decrease, in sales tax. And I think there was a report that the mayor showed us about video gambling and its correlation to sales tax. I'm not seeing the growth. We have a slow growth of sales tax, albeit it is a growth year-over-year, and I'm not seeing a major decline in that.
Okay, so the concern was that sales tax was going to be adversely impacted by the increase in gambling revenue?
Yeah.
And what you're saying is you're not seeing that?
We're not seeing that.
All right. Because I understood you to say that basically there was no gambling revenue coming in.
No, there is, but it's not having an effect on our sales tax.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah, just to clarify for the whole board, I did ask Jeff a couple weeks ago to, because I think that was one of the board's concerns when we were looking into video gaming, is whether it'd have a negative impact on retail sales tax, and that's what he just reported on, so that's good to hear. Thank you, Jeff. Next item on the agenda is the President's Report. We have one proclamation, which I will read, and it's the National Drunk and Drugged Driving 3D Prevention Month for December 2014. Whereas motor vehicle crashes killed 991 people in Illinois during 2013, and whereas hundreds of those deaths involved a driver impaired by alcohol and/or other drugs, and whereas the December holiday season is traditionally one of the most deadly times of the year for impaired driving, and whereas for thousands of families across the state and nation, the holidays are a time to remember loved ones lost, and whereas organizations across the state and nation are joined with the Drive Sober or Get Pulled Over and other campaigns that foster public awareness of the dangers of impaired driving and anti-impaired law enforcement efforts, and whereas the Village of Bartlett is a proud partner with the Illinois Department of Transportation's Division of Traffic Safety and other traffic safety groups in an effort to make our roads and streets safer. Now therefore, I, Kevin Wallace, President of the Village of Bartlett, Cook, DuPage, and Kane Counties, Illinois, do hereby proclaim December 2014 as Drunk and Drugged Driving 3D Prevention Month in the Village of Bartlett, and do hereby call upon all citizens, government agencies, business leaders, hospitals and healthcare providers, schools, and public and private institutions to promote awareness of the impaired driving problem, to support programs and policies to reduce the incidence of impaired driving, and to promote safer and healthier behaviors regarding the use of alcohol and other drugs this December holiday season and throughout the year. And if there are no objections from the board, I will so proclaim. Next item we have under planning, actually a question is an answers session. Does any of the board members have questions for the staff or anyone else at this time? Hearing none, we'll move on to the town hall portion of our meeting. During this portion of the meeting, we're encouraging anyone that would like to address the board to step up to the podium. Please try to keep your comments to three minutes. Is anybody at this point would like to address the board? Hearing none, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which are our Standing Committee Reports. The first Standing Committee Report is Planning and Zoning Committee chaired by trustee Cammerer.
Thank you, Mr. President. The only item we had under planning and zoning this evening that was put under the consent agenda.
Thank you, Chairman Cammerer. Next item is Building Committee Chairman Martin.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have no report this evening.
Thank you, Chairman Martin. Next item on our agenda is Finance and Golf Committee Chairman Ranky.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have two pending items on the Finance and Golf Committee this evening. The first item is the 2014 Property Tax Levy, which we previously discussed at the committee level, so with that, I'll turn it over to Jeff.
I really have no other further comments on the levy tonight. Again, it's a $9,344,699 levy. It's a 1.49 percent decrease over the 2013 property tax extension. Once this is approved, we'll have it filed with the counties by our statutory deadline.
I think when we were talking at the committee level, you'd mentioned that you were waiting on the final EAV. Have we received that information yet?
No, we have not.
Do we have an idea of when that information may be forthcoming?
Hopefully by March.
Okay. Okey-dokey. Any questions, comments from the board? I move to approve ordinance 2014-93, An Ordnance for the Levy and Assessment of Taxes for the General Corporate and Other Purposes of the Village of Bartlett, Cook, Page, and Kane Counties, Illinois, for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2014, and ending April 30th, 2015.
Second.
Moved by trustee Ranky, seconded by trustee Martin. Is there any discussion regarding the levy at this point? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Erns?
Yes.
Cammerer?
Yes.
Carbonero?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
That motion carries.
The next item we have on the agenda is the 2015-2019 Capital Improvements Program I think this is also a Jeff item.
Yes, trustee Ranky, at our last committee meeting, we discussed our upcoming capital budget. Next year's requests will be factored into our operating budget, which is coming up. This is a $16.9 million capital budget with numerous requests going through the 2019 fiscal year, so that's all I have at this point.
I seem to recall that we talked about switching the order of the pump station, because there was some concern that if the pump station failed, people are going to flood out. Have we rearranged that orders that reflected in the budget?
It isn't yet. I had a further discussion with the Public Works Director who has some concerns about order switching versus what the Illinois EPA is looking at some of our levels, and so we want to take a closer look at that before we switch that. Did you want to make some further comments on that, Dan?
Yeah, maybe Mr. Dent just has some comments he'd like to make.
As far as the, we're looking at, I mean, as we talked about the lift station, we know that that's a priority that was discussed last meeting, and we're looking at, funding-wise, we're looking at the loan process between that, along with the other projects that we have, and seeing what priority will be. We will be factoring that lift station in. We understand your concerns, and we want to make, we want to get it done too, so the faster we can get it done, the better, and we'll factor that in when we're getting into the, you know, final finances for next year.
Well, it seems to me to make sense to maybe wait on voting for this until we have that resolved. Do you anticipate a timeframe for when you're going to have your concerns resolved?
Well, we won't have information on the loan stuff for several months.
For what?
For any of the EPA loan information. We wouldn't have that for quite a while at this point, but.
Was it the lift station? I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I thought it was the scrubber or something we were changing out.
It was the Country Creek Lift Station, I think, is what.
Right.
It was the thing to do with the sand that filters.
Well, that was the, the project for 1516 that we put as a priority for regulation requirements.
And the other one was 43 feet down, the electrical down there, we move it up, as opposed to a chance of flooding, having to fix it, and then still move it up.
Right.
Okay.
It's, yeah, it's both. Those were the two projects, and the question is, if we have an EPA loan, we can put them both together and do them all at once versus breaking up as separate projects, and that's something that we have to figure out what the best package is for the EPA loan process.
And we won't know that information again for a few months?
No.
Unfortunately, the EPA loan process is very lengthy.
Go figure. Well, at that time, if we do get a positive response, would you come back to the board and we'd amend the program?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Having said that, I'd move to approve Resolution 2014-94, a resolution adopting the 2015, the 2019 Capital Improvements Program.
Second.
It's moved by trustee Ranky, seconded by trustee Cammerer. Is there any additional discussion? Everybody stick around here.
Do you have an ambulance?
Really, we have some medics standing by. I think we have a couple trustees that could use a medic and, no. Any discussion? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Erns?
Yes.
Cammerer?
Yes.
Carbonero?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
Mr. President, that's all we have on.
Motion carries.
Sorry.
Thank you, Chairman Ranky. Next item under the agenda is License and Ordnance Committee Chairman Carbonero.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing to report this evening.
Thank you, Chairman Carbonero. Item E, 12E, Police and Health Committee Chairman Shipman.
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing to report this evening.
Thank you, Chairman Shipman.
Although with health, it should be.
No kidding?
Yeah.
Could you add something?
Wash your hands.
12F, Public Works Committee Chairman Erns?
Thank you. If one of the staff could go through this, I sure appreciate it.
I think that would be our village attorney.
Yeah. He can just outline the memorandum here.
If you could give not a lawyer's interpretation, but a short synopsis.
Right. Okay, the short version. The village has adopted the DuPage Storm Water Ordinance for the whole village, and we did that because drainage doesn't stop at property lines and because DuPage had a comprehensive ordinance. The MWRD has adopted a watershed management permit requirement by an ordinance that requires that on any development in Cook County, they have to get a watershed development permit. If we do two things, one, submit a letter of intent to adopt it even for Cook County, which we did in February, and two, adopt this, what's before you, an intergovernmental agreement, then we would be allowed to issue in certain limited circumstances the watershed management permit, and those would be for basically less complex, smaller developments that don't have a big impact on other properties. So I have a list, you know, we can issue it for flood-protected areas, indirect wetland impacts, but if you're altering a, an existing detention pond or retention pond or combining them, then we don't have the authority to issue this permit. It would still have to come from the MWRD. So if we don't adopt it, we, every development in Cook County would require this permit from the MWRD. If we do adopt this resolution that approves of the intergovernmental agreement, then we will, under those, for smaller developments, have the ability to issue the permit, which will save time and money for owners and developers of property in Cook County. So I don't see there being a downside to adopting it, other than, you know, I don't like some of the regulations and things that affect us that we have to now comply with, but the alternative is worse, which is it affects our residents, so this is a positive, and we should do it.
If I could, I'm just curious about choosing to go with DuPage County, although I do see, you said until recently, Cook County did not have this same agreement or program, but now apparently they do. Is there some advantage to going with DuPage County as opposed to Cook County?
Cook County isn't set up to do multi-jurisdiction, so there's no option right now to adopt Cook for the whole village. DuPage was the one option, the one comprehensive ordinance where you could do that. Cook County still doesn't have this emergency management program, which you may recall was why we had to take the Streamwood Parson, still owned by the Village of Streamwood, disconnect it from Streamwood and exit to Bartlett because there was one of these emergency programs in DuPage County, because we had adopted the DuPage ordinance, and that allowed us to get the grant. It was keeping us, it caused delay in getting the Big FEMA grant. In terms of, you know, you don't like to have different rules for different parts of the village. It's kind of hard, and you have Parson where someone could own a parcel that's half in Cook, half in DuPage, part in Kane. We have some, you know, Bluff City has some development in both counties. Elmer Chicago Stone does as well, so it's a little problematic, but it'll, it'll, we'll have to live with. They're similar, are very similar in many regards. One of the differences in issuing wetland management permits or special management area permits, in Cook County, we always deferred to the Army Corps of Engineers, whereas in DuPage County, the Army Corps has deferred the issuance of wetland permits to the county. So there are some, you know, I, you know, it's hard to say. It was their first, and it was created so that we could use it multi-county, whereas Cook didn't have that until, it still doesn't have that. They took away the option to just have DuPage for the whole thing, so.
Is there anything else you don't like?
Yeah, but I, just more reporting, more going through hoops on some of these properties, but it is what it is. I haven't been anxious to do it, but the time is here.
In light of all this discussion, and thank you for being so brief, Brian.
I was answering some questions.
I move to pass Resolution 2014-95, a resolution approving the multi-county intergovernmental agreement between the Village of Bartlett and the Metropolitan Water Recreation District of Greater Chicago.
Second.
It's moved by trustee Erns, seconded by trustee Shipman. Is there any additional discussion?
One quick question. Since we haven't been issuing these little permits before, I assume we're going to have the expertise on staff, something that we're going to have to farm out.
I believe it's, you will have to look at it a little closer, the smaller ones, I believe.
I think we can do the smaller ones ourselves.
Okay. I wasn't implying otherwise, I just wanted to ask.
Yeah, no, I.
Okay, thank you.
Do any of these permits bring money into us, or does it all go to DuPage?
No, it's not a money maker.
Just one little thing that I noticed on the verbiage here, where it says, incidentally disturbs land. Does that set us up for any liability if we pass one of these permits? If we don't determine, is it black and white, what incidentally?
That was a summary. The ordinance is 110-page, so I tried to pull it down. They give you instances of what would be incidental and what wouldn't.
Okay. Do we have examples?
Some, yes.
Okay. That's all I have. Is there any other discussion?
That concludes the Public Works Committee.
Wait, we have to vote on it.
Oh, well, that's tricky.
No discussion, clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Erns?
Yes.
Cammerer?
Yes.
Carbonero?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, now that concludes, I think, the Public Works Committee.
Thank you, Chairman Erns. Next item we have on our agenda this evening is under new business. At this point, does anybody have any new business for the good of the order?
Did we hear back from IDOT on Lake Street? We had that little memo, one page in here.
I'm sorry, I'm not sure what you're referring to.
Oak and Lake, the redoing that. We were reaching out to them to talk to one of their engineers.
Relative to the project with Walnut Hills or just the improvements right along through here?
Improvements.
Yeah, they're just doing some short-term improvements right now. I think our commitment was under $2,000, and it just includes a few lights. I think that's all they're doing in this portion of it.
Yeah, well, we're waiting, we got a thing in our packet, another saying that we're reaching out and it was to do another study or something.
That was for the intersection of 59 and West Bartlett Road. And, yeah, we did say, they told us what they intended to do, what the parameters of that program were, and we asked them to look more broadly at that, given what we thought would be going in there in the near future, and we talked, and they sent us back a note that said, "We're moving forward with our current plans." So I directed the staff today to begin to make some phone calls and tell them that we would like to have our input more carefully considered, and probably we'll be sitting down with them to get their attention before they move ahead. This is a different kind of a program than what they did up with Walnut Hills, where they had a committee and they had input. These are one of those fast-track programs, and I think the calendar for beginning it was, was pretty quick. So I think what we want to do is kind of get in the middle of that right now and say, "Wait a minute."
Right.
"We think that there's some significant improvements that really ought to come in right now."
Do it once, do it right, or do it twice?
That's right.
Yeah.
Some double lefts, perhaps.
I know that we've had some recent updates on Sterns and 59. Do you want to share that with the board?
Yes, absolutely. In fact, I think we have that scheduled for the agenda after next.
Yeah, yeah.
There have been, as you know, some different layouts and proposals for the intersection of 59 and Sterns Road, and we've had input from the county that has disagreed with the state, and we've had input from some of our business folks who wanted some changes and have spent a lot of time on that. IDOT came back probably two weeks ago and actually redid sections of the proposal that I think you are all familiar with. They took away the dual-left turns on Sterns Road heading, turning south, and they put in a stacking lane so that people who are coming off of 59, turning east onto Sterns Road, can stack and make a left turn into the shopping center. And as you remember, the original plan had a median that was not mountable. So there's some other incidental changes, but those are the two that I thought were most significant. We got those plans and sent them right away to our traffic engineer, who has taken a look, has some comments about that, and I thought it would be appropriate to bring those to the board, have our traffic engineer in here and explain them in detail, and try to figure out, you know, really what happened, and who is it good for, and does it create any new problems that we think may have come about inadvertently. So, yeah, there was a fairly large change.
Yeah, and just to make everybody real clear, it's a long ways off from anybody, anything teeing off with that whole, that whole change. So this isn't like, okay, let's hurry up, and all of a sudden there's a decision. It's like a long ways away.
Yeah.
It's been a long time coming, and I think there's still a long ways to go.
That's right. I think that's fair.
Good. Any other new business? Hearing none, does anyone have any questions, answers, or comments? Hearing none, does anyone have any questions, answers, or comments?
I have a quick comment.
Yep.
Am I in there? Everybody can hear me? This Sunday, I was out in the front yard decorating the bushes with Christmas lights, and I noticed a nice lady who was, has asked me to remain nameless. She was going up and down Prospect Avenue and decorating the newly planted little trees. I asked her what she was doing. She said, "Well, I've lived in town about 35 years, and when I first moved out here, all the trees were about this size." So she had kind of like a tear in her eye, because she said, you know, "There used to be big trees, now there's the little bitty ones again." So if you happen to drive up and down Prospect Avenue on the west side, there's little itty-bitty Christmas ornaments on each of the new ceilings, because it was her way of celebrating Christmas. But she's been here a long time, you know, and people that do this kind of stuff kind of make you proud to say, "I live in Bartlett."
That's great.
I saw her doing that decoration, and I thought maybe it was the Charlie Brown Christmas tree, because trees are pretty small right now.
Very small. That's great. One comment I had just on our monthly notes here. The Building Department issued 269 permits in October, which I thought was outstanding. It says there it represents an increase of 35 percent in permit activity over the span of a 20-year average. So we did some research there, it sounds like, and over 20-year average, we were up 35 percent. That's pretty impressive.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's good to hear.
Mayor, if I may, I did want to add one comment, your comment already. You mentioned with the intersection of Sterns and Route 59, that it's a big project that we're not moving forward on quickly, that we're taking time to look at, and I guess I would just say to the people who are in the audience, particularly those of you who are with the media, that we have several very big projects ahead of us in the short term, or in the not-too-distant term, including the water and the TIF and West Bartlett, or the Sterns Road interchange there, and I just, I know I've said this before, but I think it's so important that we hear from our residents, and I would encourage our residents to come out and tell us what you think, because once the ink's dry on the contract, we can't change things. So if you have opinions, please, we want to hear them. We need your input, so.
That's a great point, great point. And speaking of feedback from residents, one last thing I wanted to note in our monthly evaluation, I don't know if people in the audience know, but every month, we get a little monthly report that every department gives us an update on what their accomplishments were for the month, and the surveys caught my eye this month. 67 surveys were sent back, and the vast majority of them, I think this is based on our GO requests, right, or calls?
Yes, it's our, that's all our computerized GO request.
That's fantastic. So the vast majority of them came back superior, 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 so, well done.
Thank you.
Did we happen to open up any walls at the golf course?
Not yet.
Okay, just checking.
All right, anything else? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Trustee Cammer, seconded by Trustee Martin. The clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Ehrens?
TL.
Ehrens?
TL, wake up.
Yes.
Yes.
Cammer?
Yes.
Carbonero?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.